We will follow these procedures. And first thing to do is we'll call the meeting to order. And we'll have our pledge of allegiance. Ms. Kellum, would you be honored in leading us please tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Kellum. Please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Here.
Mayor Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Kellum.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Councilmember Raymond.
Here.
Okay, our next item is public participation. Daniel.
I do not see any hands raised at this time, Mayor. And no emails were received for this meeting.
Okay, we'll close public participation and come back to the agenda. Discussion, proposed millage for twenty thousand and twenty-one. The five-year capital improvement plan. Uh, Mr. Morley, do you want to do the honors or do you want Mr. DeLeo?
Sure, I'll ask John to assist as well. So, uh, at the last budget meeting, we did approve a proposed tentative millage rate. Um, as you recall, uh, we cannot go above that millage rate, um, when we go to the final set millage rate. Um, we've adjusted the budget documents accordingly. There's a number of pages that were changed to reflect uh, tho- that difference in ad balloon revenue. Uh, so I had the opportunity to meet with each council member individually over the last several days to review any specific questions that, uh, they had over on budgeted items. And there's a lot of great discussion as a result of that. And I think generally, we are, we're all very enthused about the capital projects that are coming up. Um, we do have somewhat of a, an unusual situation that we've got three capital projects occurring at the same time. In this fiscal year, we've got the multi-generational facility, we've got the Cape Center, and we've also got the, um, the West Central Streetscape project, all of which are going to have their, their funding challenges. Um, we will be updating the council on the, the two, um, facilities, the, uh, multi-generational and the Cape Center at the September meeting, and we should be able to, uh, present the contract with the construction company and the guaranteed maximum price at that meeting. Um, most of the questions, or every question we had, uh, John and I met with council members on, on the telephone call, every question was answered. Um, and I don't believe there were anything that we didn't follow up on. Um, John, was there anything left that you can think of that we were supposed to follow up on?
No, all the questions were answered and each of the meetings had clarification was given.
Okay, thank you. So Mayor, I'll turn it over to the council for any particular questions or anything we want to review in any kind of, kind of detail. Uh, and then, of course, we'll go back to Daniel when you're ready to see if there's any questions, uh, on the virtual audience. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council, uh, I got Mike on the screen to my right and then Angela and then Mickey and then Wes. So let's just do it in that order and then we'll come back the other direction if you want. Mike.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I think this is a good budget. I don't think we need to go lower than rollback. We have some capital projects that need to be financed. And like we've always said, um, our city is one of the lowest, uh, millage rates in Bivard County. And I think we're doing fine and, uh, roll it back even farther is, at this time is not necessary. Thank you.
Okay. Angela.
I'm very much in favor of this budget. I feel that we're moving forward. Again, we're being proactive, not reactive. I think that we're following the city vision by, uh, providing necessary items such as the multi-generational facility. And I think the Cape Center will be a big boost also, not only to our residents and their quality of life in support of the arts, but also economically. I think that, um, with the classes being offered there and the things that are planned for that facility, it will be a great boost for our city. And, um, I'm very happy with what we're doing. I think that we have a plan for stormwater and, um, taking care of the streets and our sidewalks. It's all in our budget. And if anybody would like to review it, they're welcome to talk to any member of this council. So I'm very, very, very pleased. Thank you, John DeLeo and John DeLeo's financial team and, um, city manager Todd Moore. Thank you.
Mickey.
Um, as far as the rollback goes, I, I believe that that's where we should stay at because we have, you know, because of the COVID thing and where we are with the budget and, um, hurricane season still staring us down the the face and other projects that need to happen. I'm happy with that, um, where it is. Uh, there's other things that I would like to see in the budget. I don't know, this is the appropriate time to talk about that? Are we just talking about the millage or do, do I just say my whole spiel?
Say what you want to say. It's kind of open.
Okay. Okay, the only thing I, I, and, um, I know Daniel has some pictures that we, he could put up for us. Um, I would like to see more money in the budget somehow, maybe from other, um, locate from other places to put in our tree bank. Um, oh, eh, over the last few months, uh, around town, I have seen so many trees being cut down. And Cape Canaveral since its beginning has been known for the, uh, to be the city of trees. In our own vision, vision statement, it states that, um, we have tree-lined streets. This is Anchorage Avenue. And I, and I understand why they took it down. Um, apparently the oak trees were interfering with plumbing. If we could have the next picture, Daniel? This is the property next to Portside Villas, uh, behind, I want to say Subway where you're, when you come into town, it's behind Subway there. I understand taking down Brazil, Brazilian pepper plants, but there was a lot more trees taken down in there. Um, I know that, uh, Florida has preempted us on, um, it's statute one sixty-three point zero four five on private properties. But I would like to see us have a more substantial tree bank. Um, because we are losing trees rapidly. And, um, maybe we could come up with, I know this is up Zach's, um, and Zach's area and Brenda as well, as some, um, programs that the community could do. Um, incentives for people to plant, um, trees in their own yard. I think education for our citizens is important. Um, and then also, we should be planting as much trees on public land as we can because, I mean, we are losing trees rapidly and, um, I just think it's really important. Um, and I know, uh, we got a memo from Todd talking about green space. I think and a memo also from Jeff about how, how far we are built out, ninety-three percent built out. And how much of that is, is pavement and the lack of trees? Um, and speaking with my neighbors and other citizens, um, this is one of the most important issues is we're losing our sense of a little tree community with, um, beautiful tree-lined streets and, and I don't know if, I know probably Mike and Bob and Angela remember the, the song by Joni Mitchell, um, Big Yellow Taxi, where it said, don't it always seem to go, they don't know what they got till it gone, it's gone, and they paid paradise and put up a parking lot. And I'm scared that that's where we are headed as, as a city. And, um, I just think that more money should be put into green space programs, tree programs. You know, I understand that, um, uh, you know, on a, on the resilience survey, there was one comment from, um, a citizen, and it was all anonymous, so I don't know who it was, but he suggested that um, the city create a plan with a practical and meaningful action items that are attainable in the near future as well as long term. Keep it simple as possible, make it very unique to Cape Canaveral. Let's go for the low-hanging fruit first. Take action, create momentum. For example, strategically buy more orphaned property that has less chance of private development and enhance the stormwater and plant trees and native species um, to protect our green space and help with our lagoon. Um, with that being said, I just think that more money go, I mean, everybody in our town, they, we need leisure services and and, uh, you know, amenities, but we also need trees and parks and nature paths and con- conservative conservation areas. Um, I think we need to take advantage of the people in our city that have a lot of knowledge about that. We got an email from, uh, a citizen named, um, Mr. Longmire, not Onggo, who is willing to come to the city and talk to us about getting money for conservation areas. Um, this is my, uh, my concern. I just going through the budget and seeing all the projects and the money. I just think we need to try to put more money into the tree fund and and acquiring green space as much as we can. That's my thoughts at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey. Good, good thinking. Uh, Wes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll just transition you know, and I just want to broaden it a little bit. Um, I agree, I, I'd like to see on the public land that we do own, have control over, um, putting more investment in our landscaping, uh, and trees on those public properties, bushes, shrubberies, whatever. You know, our, um, tree arborists, horticulturists recommends, um, Florida-friendly preferable and to lead by example, so private, like we're doing with the, um, the pesticide glyphosate free. I think that, you know, when, when we as a public entity can, can do it first, then we can circle back and consider, you know, policies and ideas and programs to help others, but um, I would like to see more funding go in to landscaping. And another thing that concerns me with this is Ridgewood Avenue, uh, was one of the, I was looking at old photos when that was first done. Um, and some of the areas, the trees have matured and developed and they look beautiful. But there's been, over the years, naturally, um, trees that get taken out due to hurricanes and, uh, just walking through the, uh, yesterday looking, and I think I'd like to see if council would be open to increasing our funding to roll out, um, wherever this, the, you know, the curb appeal is, the medians, the sides of the roads to put more trees in there more native, um, Florida-friendly investments, um, into our landscaping. And, uh, this helps with, um, stormwater and drainage. I mean, every time you see a tree up in the air, you know, that's full of water, full of life. It's taken in and absorbing a lot of that water. And so, um, when I walk down Ridgewood, it's my road, when I look at other areas where we've really put our heart into investing, um, it's one of the crown jewels of our area for a, a model street, and one day we'll have all the streets there, um, looking like that, but you'll see just kind of some of these planters, it's just rocks. And at one time, there was beautiful landscaping there, and it's not there anymore. So I don't know if we've gotten the funds to replace it when plants die naturally. But, um, it, it looks quite barren in, in some of these areas through here, and I know these things do cost money. Um, it's not as easy as just, oh yeah, just drop a tree there. It takes time, it takes money, it takes nurturing and care. And it probably increases our own operations and maintenance with the landscaping, but I think it's worth it. I think that, you know, we promote bikeable, walkable, and this is a heavy traffic area, but I'm not advocating for Ridgewood, I'm advocating citywide. Um, wherever we have control, our parks, um, to come in and put, um, a, a as much funding as we can. Um, I think that that's a higher priority for those two reasons. Um, and, and I think if I had to highlight one of the biggest areas where I think we can improve in our landscaping is, um, I think what makes us different than the big cities of the world or Orlando. Um, I always say Orlando can't build a beach, you know, and so we've got our beach and those, every one of our beach entrances. Um, if you just look closely, uh, there is some room for improvement. And so I think, you know, we're some of its maintenance, where just mangroves and things are coming over into the parking space and crossover, but I do envision um, sprucing up our beach crossovers, putting more trees and more foliage around those entrances there. Um, because I think that that's where that's where people look, that's where, that's that moment in, in a lot of people's day where you walk out and it's kind of like that moment of arrival at what makes Cape Canaveral unique and one of the only residential neighborhoods in the state of Florida, right on the beach, and we've worked hard to zone it and protect it that way. And so I'd like to see um, more, I guess I'm getting more specific on the locations and echoing what, uh, you, you said, Councilmember Kellum. But, um, whatever the funding is, um, if it's like it was last year, I'd like to see that increase. And, um, wanted to talk to council about that. So to sum it up, tree landscaping investments um, on our, our, you know, our streets, our medians, our improved areas. We need enough funds to replace it when a hurricane takes something out. And, um, I took a lot of photos yesterday of exactly what I'm talking about. Um, and, and then also at our beach crossovers to make those, um, you know, we, we put the, the new crossovers in, but to put um, maybe some railroad ties, uh, around the border there to give it, you know, kind of frame it in, 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 in brack, um, and, and make it look tight. I'm not a landscaper, but I know, you know, an investment in a layout and a design of kind of what one crossover could look like could be something I would support. Because I think that's something that we all share. And then not only the beachfront, but, um, on the riverfront too, we're on an island. So, um, our parks are, are beautiful over there. Um, but, you know, I would support, um, those are some of the newer ones, so those are looking really nice, but if we can put more investment out there too, because, you know, whether we're going out at Manatee Sanctuary Park or Banana River Park or Center Street, um, not a lot of room in some of those, but to make that, um, special for people. And so that is the first one. So landscaping and trees, um, budget, um, priority. Um, and then sea oats. Uh, every year, I think we do ten, twen- I think we do twenty thousand, I forget the number. I got a nice list of how many we've done over the years. I think the mayor had mentioned this earlier, but I supported it. Uh, when you did, I think you said something like, maybe we'll do more one year, and that got me excited and something that I look forward to. We're starting to have so many volunteers, we plant the sea oats so fast now, and that just tells me, can we get more sea oats? Not just based on the volunteers, but, um, with storms brewing and hurricanes, you know, we've seen the benefits of those, they're doing their job, they're building the boones. And we just even doubled down there and, you know, went to twenty-five, thirty. I'd love to see fifty thousand sea oats go out in a year. We got the labor, the support to do it, we have the volunteers. And to make a really big push, because that's one of those things that when you plant them today, you know, it takes three, five years for them to really mature and to take hold, and protecting our coastline is very, very important. So sea oats is a second thing, and you can kind of wrap that up into, I guess, landscaping and beachfront. Um, the next one, just going down the line here. Um, something with A1A, something I think we're all passionate about. You know, getting the speed limit lowered, every year we put a formal resolution and send it to the state together. But, um, when I met with Representative Saroy uh, last year and he brought the, uh, the, um, DOT FDOT secretary who happened to be there, which I was lucky, and the representative from Tallahassee. One of the things that they talked about being able to get bumped up on the list was when cities put matching funds together. And so, you know, when we put skin in the game, then, then that's going to incline the state to get a little bit more involved. And this is more of just planting a seed to say, you know, where could, where would it make sense for us to make an investment on A1A? I know it's not our road, but if we just took landscaping and just keep rolling that out and say, hey, we'll handle um, a percentage of the trees or we'll handle some of the hard costs that go into those construction projects. You know, how much would it take to get the state's attention? Um, that's something that I don't think I, you know, we've really addressed in our budget. But think about that reality, is that if, if we were able to put a hundred thousand dollars into it, you know, would the state come in and get their attention? What number do we need to be at to, to get them to want to move, um, and kind of set the stage to say, this is how serious we are? I think it's important because that's the one area in our city where we do see people get killed. And every year, just a matter of time before the next victim falls. And we all know that's directly within the vision, but instead of sitting back and waiting and watching, um, our name move up and down the priority list, just trying to work with council and think about, um, what if we carved out some of the budget, uh, and, and this year when we do our, or the next time we send our letter to the state, maybe we make that value proposition. So we got time on that, but I wanted to plant that seed. The money has to come from somewhere, but A1A is very important, I think, to all of us, and that was, um, my third thing that I wanted to bring up in this workshop today. And, um, electric cars, this brought up during our city manager meeting. We're, you know, a lot of people say two square miles, I think we're actually, we're one point nine, I think, I could be wrong. So roughly two square mile city, and, um, you couldn't ask for a more ideal location to get away with, uh, the most cost-effective electric cars out there. Um, I'm happy with the progress we're making, but I do see in this budget that we've got re- vehicle replacements coming up. And I'd like to see, um, if council would be interested in considering, um, moving forward from all of our infrastructure and maintenance vehicles, our code enforcement vehicles, any other ones. I'm not talking police and fire, but really our city staff for code enforcement and infrastructures to invest in electric vehicles. Um, where, you're not driving far, you're gonna, you know, I think it's an ideal location proximity to be able to get around the city. And I'm sure Zach and Todd and the team has put the numbers together when I spoke to them about the, it's the cost to drive. I was doing the math for myself the other day. And, um, it's gotten to a point now to where an electric car, the case is made that you know, if you're going to drive it for five years, um, it certainly pays for itself, and I think we would get away on top here. And that's just another example, a, a way to lead by example. And so, moving forward as we add on new cars, um, I, I, if the budget, which I see vehicle replacements, um, in here, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars, um, I think that can get us an electric car. And it doesn't have to be the top notch, because we don't need a long range. We don't need to go two hundred fifty, three hundred miles. So we could get away with, I think, one of the more economical ones and, um, be able to, um, save on gas money and, uh, maintenance, all the carburetors, moving parts, none of those things are there. And so, um, if those things are already being ex- explored, um, what I'm saying to council is, on the next replacement, um, I don't want to, if we can do it, see another gas vehicle purchased. Um, I'd like to see electric cars and electric trucks too. This is going to be, COVID certainly delayed the release of a lot of the electric trucks, but we've seen Ford, um, Rivian, uh, the Cybertruck and a few others that's came out. Um, I know that our infrastructure maintenance and code enforcement might need trucks, but we have that option now too. Um, communications, something Todd talked to me about and I'm in support of if the number comes back higher, but you know, this, we're under COVID, we're meeting virtually, but I would love to see, and I'm in support of having, um, an improvement in our, um, video live streaming. We obviously had some challenges with that. But I don't want to just get the bare minimum. I'd like to have the ability to have all the cameras and the infrastructure where our citizens can watch us from their homes, um, have close-up videos, um, watching a city of Rockledge meeting is a good example. Uh, the county, and, um, I'd like to see Cape Canaveral get the, um, the software and the investment in cameras that we need to allow people to have a high-quality experience from watching, um, city council meetings. So that would really fit under the, I guess, communal, community engagement, communications or legislative budget. But, um, that's something, um, I'm in support of as well. And then the, uh, you know, roads and sidewalks are, um, things that I just feel like we're getting closer every year, but I'd like to see us, um, make that a priority. Uh, you know, you drive down roads and you see people walking in the streets still. And I'd like to see an increase of, of sidewalk funding and try to finish that out. Um, and set some goals, and you say in the next five years, we're a hundred percent complete on sidewalks. Um, I think we've got our paving fund in here and we've got some mobility plans. But I think we can do, um, if it's twenty-five percent more, I'm happy, just to do a little bit more. Um, and the last one, we talked about it last time, it'd be on the agenda coming up, is our solar, um, electric lights. Something I want to think about the city is when you look at our electric costs every single month, what we're spending on all of our light poles. Um, Todd can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's roughly thirty dollars a month that we pay per light. And if you want to lighten, um, is that right, Todd?
Yes, that's generally correct. We're working on getting an inventory of all of those for council.
Excellent, thank you, sir. And so the, the goal is to seriously, and this is more of a long time plan, but if we don't start talking about it today, is if, if we get the new and improved solar lights to, to really envision us over time, getting off of that monthly bill that we pay thirty dollars per light per month and to start investing in the solar lights all throughout the city and wean off of our dependency, um, with, um, those Florida power and light, um, lights and to, to make our city, um, independent and sustainable as much as we possibly can. And so solar lighting, um, wherever we can get it is something big. And then also, I was very happy to see um, solar going in, uh, it looks like in the capital improvement plan, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, potentially for the Bivard County Sheriff's Office. Zach sent me that. That's really good news, because if we can lower their cost of electricity, um, by, by going solar there, that's going to allow them to use that money in other more important resources. Electricity prices continue to increase every single year. But the beauty of, of our city being able to do that is we can lock that cost in and save on the backend. So those are some of my big ones. Thank you for your patience as I work through those. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I don't have much to add. You guys covered a lot of stuff I always think about. The only one that really mentioned was the stormwater systems. Um, we've had a little unheard-of storm the other night that we haven't had in years. We get a taste of it every once in a while, and of course, it's, there's a lot into what it takes to make all that work with. Uh, like the couple inches we had in an hour and a half or whatever it was. It showed you what can happen with a lot of a lot of infrastructure that fails. But we are, I think, doing the utmost that we can do as a city with what we can do to get our infrastructure up to par, and I, I, yeah.
Mayor?
To be, yes.
This is Dave Dickey. Can I mention something real quick?
Uh, sure.
Yeah. Our staff, our community development staff, primarily Zach and Brenda, have put together a draft resiliency plan, and it's the next step to take um, after we finished our vulnerability assessment that we worked with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council on. The outgrowth of that is going to be a resiliency plan, and there's fifty-six goals contained in there. And I want to promise the council that you are going to be challenged over the next year um, to address these. They're very exciting. They're going to be, they're dealing with everything I'm hearing the council talking about this evening. I think you guys are going to be so excited when you get that in your hands. Uh, it's a shame that COVID came in when it did. We were going to be presenting this to you at the planning retreat. Um, but you should be receiving it shortly. It talks about stormwater, it talks about converting our fleet to electric. It talks about additional trees and this, and the, the importance of the urban canopy, uh, landscaping, sea oats, mangroves, all of these things are contained in this one plan. And I cannot wait for the council to get it and just get it as excited about it as I am. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dave. I wanted to add on to that. Um, thank you for that brief recap, Dave. That document is also intended to inform our future budgets. So as we adopt that document, we're going to be putting those programs in place and speaking to it in our budget. And that's where you get things done. So in future years, yeah, coming up next year, we're gonna see more money put in those areas specifically for this reason.
Okay, sounds like you got a little ahead of us there.
Just trying to anticipate, sir.
That's good news. That's good news. But I did want to mention, uh, I know, uh, we have, we have a lot of, we have a lot of issues and they're all, they're not all small. Some number can be handled quickly, some takes a long time. And uh, my, my take on trees is I love trees. But I, I, over the years, I'd watched Cape Canaveral plant those big live oak trees right in between the sidewalk and the street. And uh, I just happened to go by the other day talking to the guys, they were talking about trimming trees and we were noticing, as you go around town, you'll notice over a period of time, you'll notice the sidewalk starting to raise in places. And they have to go around and grind them down. And what caused that is that big oak tree because it has a very shallow root system, it don't have any deep roots. So it's gonna grow underneath the sidewalk and uh, I've seen them where we had them crack the curbs on Washington Avenue, we had a real hazard back there about four years ago where it cracked the curb and the root was growing out into the street. So we had to take the curb out, take the tree out and that's the wrong tree to be planting in a little four foot area. I got one in my front yard, I planted, planted too close to a slab that I poured for a little table. I turned the tables up about three or four feet high off of it. But the roots on oak trees are bad. I love oak trees. I think they're very beautiful, but they need to be put in a big spot like Menity Park and public lands in the parks and not between the sidewalk and the street. We've done that mistake back years ago and it was, it was, looks pretty, but there's constant maintenance on fixing the infrastructure. So the oak trees have their place. The dogwood trees that are on Ridgewood Avenue are nice. They keep those nice and clean and trimmed. Those don't have invasive roofs. They got deep root systems. So that's the type of tree you need to put out there on the rightaways. And uh, Wes, you mentioned the uh, A one A scape. Over the years, the city of Cape Canaveral did all that beautification on A one A. All that stuff you see on A one A, the city did all that. And we didn't get any kickback from, from, we, I noticed up in Flagler County, uh, last week, the speed limit got lowered to twenty-five miles an hour. Why did they do it on Flagler? It's a, it's a very open urban place. There's no places like we got here and we can't get ours lowered than forty. So I, I, I don't know why we can't, what do we gotta do? Pay, pay the state to do it or how do we do it? We've even offered to help with stoplights and they don't do that. But I don't know what the answer is to that one. But yeah, I'd like to see that speed limit get lowered very definitely. That's something I've always been hollering about.
Mayor, I can speak to that. This is Todd. Um, we had other, we had another planning session with uh, the consultants and FDOT. I want to say maybe four or six weeks ago. And they're very much aware of our desire to lower the speed limit to thirty-five miles per hour. One of the ideas they keep talking about is a traffic circle. Of course, that's gonna be a very tough sell where there's a, it's a, it's a love hate relationship people tend to have with traffic circles. But they came up with a really interesting proposal that I, I've shared um, with you before, I believe. Um, it's not a traffic circle, but imagine like half a traffic circle as you're coming south over the overpass just before, just as you're crossing into the, that area uh, where the city sign is, that it bumps out to the right and curves and then comes back to the left and then you straighten out. So it's like a bump out, a, a, a western bump out that comes back. And I mean, for the northbound traffic, it's an eastern bump out that comes back. So it almost looks like half a traffic circle. It's just changing the direction of the lane slightly to slow down the traffic. It doesn't require a light, a traffic light, and that can slow down the traffic significantly. And we think that's a great idea. Also in that, in that space, that creates a circle, an open space that would be an ideal place for maybe significant tree scaping or landscaping and, and beautifying. And to council member um, um, Callum's point there about planting more trees in, in, in the rightaway at city spaces and also the council member Morrison's place about having skin in the game for FDOT projects, I can see all of this kind of working together. That if we can put some more of this resiliency plan funding into trees and landscaping and we're looking for places, we need really look no further than, than FDOT's rightaway, putting skin in the game for that project. We can potentially help with that and, and shoot two or three birds with one stone.
Well, if you put that together, Todd, we'd like to take a look at that because anything to slow that traffic down, especially up around that hotel area on uh, the Burger King area is horrible trying to get out of Burger King or out of that hotel up there.
Yes, sir. They, they understand. Yeah, and if we can control it there, starting at the northern end, it's so much easier to control the speed south of there.
Right, right. Okay. All right, I guess uh, everybody's had a good say. Anybody want to come back with uh, a secondary? Mayor Proton, you, Mickey, Angela, you got your hand up?
Yes, just a few comments about A one A. We haven't been sitting on our hands, as Todd has said, and I just, you know that I'm on the Transportation Policy Committee for Florida League of Cities and I've been very proactive about A one A. And there I've had an opportunity to talk to the people from the DOT. And I know Mayor Ho and Mayor Randalls has been very, very proactive. Uh, and Rocky, I believe, is still involved with the TPO. And um, every time I get a chance to speak to anyone like Tyler Saroyes or um, our senators, Senator Wright, I, every time I see him, I speak about the same thing, A one A. We need to slow the traffic down. Uh, I've also spoken to Brian Loper. And as I said, I keep, I feel like a broken record. Last year I was able to give the speech at the port when all of our senators were there. So it's something that we've been very actively involved in. I just want to make sure that the public understands this, that we have been working on this and I have not stopped.
Mickey, did you? Okay.
Um, I just, just for clarification, because I'm new at this budget process. Um, the resilience uh, plan that uh, Mr. Dickey spoke about, um, is that going to be for the twenty twenty twenty-one budget? Or will that not be implemented until the following year?
The plan is to bring the, the resiliency plan forward to council in this next fiscal year for adoption. Once it's adopted, we will know how to, how it forms the uh, twenty-one budget, the fiscal year twenty-one.
Okay. Um, and then I, I just would like to say that um, I agree with uh, um, what uh, Councilman Morrison said about um, how important the communication is. I think that we should, there should be uh, you know, a limit on the spending, but let's get the best so that if this happens again, we don't have to go through this with the citizens not being able to participate or hear or whatever. I think that that's important. Um, and the sidewalk plan, if we could adapt a, a five-year plan, three-year plan like we are doing tonight later for the solar lights, you know, so many streets in, in a, in a fiscal year. Um, and then the other thing is, um, the, oh, I saw in the memo Todd that you wrote that we, it says that we, we tried to buy green space and we can't. Is there a reason why? I mean, I understand that um, you know, some people, like the little, the property that I talked to you about next to the um, the new park on uh, North Atlantic, that little piece of land that doesn't look like anybody would be able to get the right away or the variances to, unless we do a special exception to build on. And I think it would, that would be a good place for stormwater drains. Uh, we had talked about that before. Todd, could you tell us about that?
Yeah, and I believe Dave, you contacted the property, by recollection, they were not willing to sell. Is that correct?
Yeah, if, if we're talking about the piece just, just outside of Harbor Heights, um, then yeah, that, that is the case. Actually, uh, that has a purchase contract on it uh, from a residential developer here in town. Uh, they're proposing to put, I believe it's three townhouses on that piece of property. So they, they are, uh, they've requested a variant, which is needed. Um, but they, they are moving forward with that particular piece of property.
And another property we've been eyeing for the last year or so is the uh, Center Street Parcel, under parcel for stormwater. And we've recently learned that uh, that doesn't meet the design criteria because it's only eighty feet wide and we have to have at least a hundred feet wide for it to be developed as a stormwater park. So we're still um, looking to see if there's room to maybe expand the width of that. Um, working with the Realtor and the owner there, we're still working on trying to acquire some property. It's just, it's challenging in a city that's ninety-three percent built out.
Hello?
I think uh,
Hello?
Uh, hello? Who's, who's out?
Right, right. And you know, that's, that, that's what, you know, worries me. That's what my concern is. And you know, another thing is if you go down by where um, Mr. Brown lives, um, therm and you, where, right where the big parking lot is, if you look north towards um, central, west central, that's nothing but pavement, you know? And it's, I know the new hotel is putting landscaping in, but um, no, I just am worried that we'll just be one big parking lot soon. Um, I also agree with uh, the A one A matching funds, that, I think that's a good idea. And then Todd, we had talked a long time ago about the Christmas decorations and Fourth of July decorations that we used to have on the poles that kind of gives A one A a calm, uh, gives you a calming effect as you're driving. I know you had said that that it was gonna happen this year. Um, do you know anything about, I think that that helps when people are driving. If there, it, it feels like a town rather than a throughway when you have that.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer that question to John. I recall that we did throw, I had to throw away a lot of those decorations because they were old and they were no longer uh, reliable. Uh, and uh, therefore you don't want to take any chances there. And we plan to purchase some more. John, can you speak to that in the budget detail?
Uh, well, just to my knowledge, yeah, the, the, for the most part, the, the decorations for the city are all pretty much around the new city hall. Um, I could, let me look in workbook here and see if there actually is a line item that talks about a Christmas line item. You know, we're so far away from Christmas, I haven't even thought about that, Mickey. So let me go ahead, let me go ahead and look at that while you, you can go ahead and discuss uh, something else while I look that up for you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, that, that's all I have. I just um, you know, that's all I have. I just would like to see more money spent on trees and green space. That's all I have.
Mayor, this is Dave. I will say this, that one of the specific goals in the resiliency plan is for the city to look for opportunities to buy green space that will second as stormwater facilities. So there is a lot of good stuff coming to the council that I think is really gonna give you a lot of, yes, there you go, exactly.
Okay. Well, that's good news. Uh, the resiliency plan would be forward, looking forward to seeing that and putting some of it into action. Uh, anybody else have anything they want to go over? Yes, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so, yeah, I think that's it. What does the council think about increasing? I mean, what I'm saying is to not let another year go by. Can we move money towards um, landscaping and sea oats this year? Todd, interject if you feel like we're gonna be able to get it done with this budget.
I don't have any problem with uh, getting more sea oats. I think that one is achievable. We'll find a way to do that. Additional landscaping, we first need to decide where we want to put it first and then come up with a budgetary number. But uh, I think we could make a mid-year adjustment for that somewhere, sure.
Okay, that's great. Counsel, we can bring it back. And um, Dave, thank you for um, coming in with the resiliency plan and everyone who worked on it. I do remember reading that first one that, um, that came out, the one that I think Councilmember Callum. And it did excite me. I think it excites everyone. And so I look forward to putting that into action. Um, and then just, yeah, the next car that we buy, I mean, I'm not really talking about changing the money around. I'm just changing the, you know, what we purchase, trying to set a vision here that um, if the next car we buy is electric, that's good news. I don't think there's any action to be taken, but um, and the cost to drive, I think it makes sense. But there, I had one more thing. Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You brought up on stormwater. That's something I think we're all kind of seeing. It is pouring rain as we speak. And uh, I've got a, I'm looking down and I think that, you know, what happened the other day, that video um, that Mr. Moore and Todd put out and they shared it on social media and I shared it online too, was a good video and it talks about, you know, hey, these things basically happen. And you can design a stormwater system, you spend as much money as you want. You can put uh, catch basins every ten feet if you want and it'll drain. But I think as long as we're, that memo that was put out by um, Todd that we all got uh, and they, the, the, towards the end, um, the staff will continue to research projects that could improve stormwater flow, eliminate significant street flooding and improve water quality. Um, thank you for that. I think that's what, were we being warned the other day by Mother Nature, you know, if that's a twenty-five year storm? Um, it just seemed odd and, and like the water did start to drain, but it was just a short, heavy rain. And who knows? I think, you know, over my past seventy-eight years, I can think of that happening two to three times a year. I don't think we should spend a lot of money for something that happens two to three times a year. But when I put that out, um, and just shared that and I started driving around, I got eight to ten citizens and I'll forward these over to, for council to see who sent me photographs on both sides of A one A. Um, where, you know, the worst one I saw was um, I can't remember the apartment, but it was coming up on her porch. Who knows what the story is there, you know, budding parcels development causes this. But as we look forward, I think the storms are gonna get more intense. I think we're seeing that in real time and just being able to work on all sides. This, that's the core of the resiliency plan. But if there's anything that we need to do to invest into getting an engineering report or another um, deep dive beyond what staff has already looked into, I'm in full support of that. Want to be reasonable, but I think the best plan for today is let's see what happens. Um, and this council, as always, be ready to move quick if we need to make adjustments. But um, hopefully that was a, a one-off situation. But stormwater is on a lot of citizens' minds. Um, surf drive uh, has been a continued challenge. I think Todd sent some staff out there. We've heard from um, the concerns back there on Long Point Road from Mr. Brew and Patty Green with the park development and I saw Jeff's email out. And so every time a decision is made, you know, stormwater is always factored in. And so uh, we've got, I think, make sure we've got, we've spent a lot of money on stormwater and taken on debt to do it and it's that important. But uh, we gotta be ready as a council to do, as Todd said, like a mid, mid-year adjustment if needed. And um, I'm just stating my valve support there. If it's engineered correctly, um, then, then maybe, you know, there might need to be upgrades. But I'm willing to spend extra funds to make sure that those streets, people don't have water coming up on them. Fillmore Avenue was absolutely horrible. Um, I drove back there, that water was all the way into uh, their, their parking lot. And the, the tone is this continues to happen for them. It was odd for me because Ridgewood usually doesn't stand, have standing water as often. And so I knew that if it was standing on my street, it's gotta be bad in those areas and it was. So um, I know we all, Mayor, you've been here long as anybody, you've, you've seen Cape Canaveral, Cam-. So, um, I know we all, Mayor, you've been here long as anybody. You've, you've seen Cape Canaveral come a long ways. But, um, if we can make the water fall and stay and slow it down, that's good. And this budget, it's a big number we put towards it every year, but I'm willing to put more if we need to. And so.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject real quick, this is John. We're having one heck of a lightning rainstorm in Cocoa Beach over my house. I mean, it's horrific. So just in case, if, in case I got cut off, but here's the answers to your questions. Mickey, there's two thousand dollars, uh, in the budget for Christmas, uh, decorations. It's a, a line item, two thousand dollars. There's fifty-five hundred dollars in the budget for sea oats. Um, and there is a message I got here that says, um, when it comes to decorations on poles on A1A, there are no city-owned poles on FDOT right away. If the city wants decorations on A1A, they will have to be some type of agreement with FPNL. Tim is working with Nancy Fickinger at FPNL to try and get a waiver or insurance deleted. We will keep you all informed. Jim Moore. I wanted to get that in before I lose complete power. That's all I got.
I don't know if I said that's all I have too, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Wes.
Mr. Mayor, I think he might have frozen up. Does the rest of the council see that? Is he froze on your screen?
Yeah, it appears that Mayor Hoax, it's frozen.
It's definitely storming pretty bad, so I don't know what.
I think.
It's very bad.
If he doesn't come back, it would be appropriate for Mayor Pro Tem Brown to take over the meeting.
Okay.
Looks like he just dropped off. Mayor Pro Tem Brown might come back.
I'm going to resend him the, um, join webinar email.
For the mayor. Okay.
It's very, very bad here with the lightning and it almost looks like a tornado along the river. That's what I've been looking at during the meeting. The trees were almost down to the ground back here.
Mayor, Pro Tem, perhaps if you could ca, uh, canvass the council one last time for any remaining comments? And perhaps if there are none, we can go ahead and, uh, and, uh, end this meeting and then take a break for our six o'clock meeting.
Okay. I think Mickey had her hand up real quick. Go ahead, Mickey.
Yes, I just wanted to ask Todd, um, and, and, and tell that, I don't know if the other council people know that there's fifteen hundred dollars in the tree fund. Um, and what, Todd, what do you, can we get, um, staff to kind of come up with an incentive program and bring it back to us later about how we get maybe citizens to plant trees in their yards or some kind of, um, I don't know, some kind of incentive program where maybe we can buy a bunch of trees and give them out or on Arbor Day or some kind of thing that promotes more trees in our yard, in our yard and in our cities.
Uh, I think that's probably a good candidate to add a section in our resiliency plan for. Dave, if you'll take a note about that, the, uh, the tree fund is possibly a good source of that where we could actually do a cash assistance for, uh, certain property owners, um, who meet certain requirements. Obviously the Tree Bank, we try to spend that as fast as we get it. We want to plant as much as we can when we can. But I think that's a, a good candidate for the resiliency plan.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that, that sounds great. We do something very similar to that currently. Uh, we're actually providing mangrove, uh, mangrove seedlings to, uh, to our eligible property owners. Zach started that project. It's been very, very successful. So we have a template I think that we can follow, but yeah, definitely. And, uh, we can certainly build upon that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Morrison, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Brown. Um, so yeah, I saw that mangrove program. That's fantastic. And the, I think the, um, the other thing is, you know, we work with KBB, a limited capacity Keeper of our beautiful. And I went on their map. I got my yard registered as they've got different levels for the Keeper of, uh, Florida Friendly Yard. I qualified for the gold. They still need to come out and verify it, but you know, no pesticides, all the, the criteria. But they got, you know, like I think gold, silver and bronze. And, um, but there was only three, I think, yards in the whole city that were there. There's probably a lot of people who already.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Is, at this time, unless anybody has any, for, on John, on monthly financials, did you want to go ahead and go briefly? Or we go ahead and move for adjournment to the next meeting? Did everybody get that?
I can hear you, Mayor Pro Tem. I don't know if John can hear you.
Okay. If, if that's the case, we.
This is Daniel, the organizer, uh, just letting everyone know John is showing as offline. He might've got knocked off by power.
Do we need any type of a motion to approve what we've done today and what we've supported?
This is just a workshop meeting, uh, there's.
Okay. Then I think we're done. Can we move to adjourn?
Yeah, seeing that John is offline for the current monthly financials, I'll move for adjournment.
Yes, I will move to adjourn. Wes is also frozen.
Okay.
I will move to adjourn.
Okay, Mickey. Okay, we, that's, we have, we have three. So we'll move for adjournment. So Todd, next meeting is what time?
Six o'clock. We'll pray for good weather in the next hour.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.